For those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer, please do.
Father.
Father, how would that I name thy kingdom come, that I will be done on earth as it is heaven, give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have forsaken our promises; and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, and thy is even and power and glory forever. Amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in our nation, in thy God and in this world, with the redeemed and washed up.
We're convening at the legislative session of 2016-24, December 6, 2016. Entertained a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from November 15, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from November 15 in reference to the Maryland Food Bank lease addendum.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from November 15, 2016 in reference to BG Catlin Enterprise LLC agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from November 15 of the Wycomico County Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Good evening, Mr. Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. President, gentlemen of the county council, ladies and gentlemen. First order of business this evening pursuant to the Wycomico County Charter, Section 3, Article 3, Section 303, at its first meeting in December of each year, the council shall elect from among its members by a vote of the majority of the total number of council members established by this charter, a president and a vice president. The president, or in his absence, the vice president shall establish the agenda and preside at all meetings on all questions before the council, and the president and vice president shall have and may exercise the vote to which each is entitled as a council Therefore, is there a nomination for president of the Wycomico County Council?
I'd like to nominate John Cannon as president.
Mr. Cannon has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I call for the vote, Mr., if we'll do this by voice vote, please. Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Joe Holloway?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Mr. McKilmer?
Aye.
Mr. Matt Holloway?
Aye.
Mr. Chair of the -- congratulations, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you.
Would you preside over the election of a vice president?
Okay, we'd like to open the floor for the nominations for a vice president. At this time, I'd like to entertain any nominations for vice president.
I'd nominate Larry Dodd for vice president.
We have a nomination. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, that concludes the nomination process, and I would, we'll take a vote then. We'll go to this side. Councilman Hall. Councilman Kilmer.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Dodd? Congratulations, Vice President.
Thank you, congratulations.
At this time, we would change the seatings around, is that correct?
Mr. Dodd, Mr. Holloway, will you exchange seats, please?
I just got comfortable.
Mr. Matt Holloway, while Mr. Dodd is assuming his new seat, may I express gratitude for your service as council vice president?
Thank you.
Next item of business is Resolution Number 145, 2016, confirming the appointment of Newell E. Quinton to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee. Mr. Jack Lennox is here if you have any questions. However, Mr. Quinton is currently a member of the Planning Commission, and he will be assuming the role on the Natural Resources Committee of the person representing the Planning Commission, and that is the reason for this appointment, as the former member has retired.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 145, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 145, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 146, 2016, confirming the appointment of William A. Carter to the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners.
So moved.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 146, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 147, 2016, confirming the reappointment of George V. Landon, Sr., to the Wycomico County Board of Electrical Examiners. Mr. Landon has been a member of the board for quite a number of years, having served very faithfully.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 147, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution is approved.
Next is Resolution Number 148, 2016, approving a transfer between major categories of the Wycomico County Board of Education operating budget for fiscal 2017, transferring a total of $41,287, as shown in Exhibit A, and we have representatives from the Board of Education to explain or answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 148, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
How's everybody?
Just waiting.
Good. Did you bring that big yellow bus for you today?
No.
I saw it in the parade.
Yes.
But I didn't see any heads sticking out the windows.
No, we had the posters representing all of the schools, and we had our superintendent through the emergency hatch.
Right.
With her feet firmly planted on a ladder under her, so it was great fun.
Good, good. If you could, for the viewers, let us know who you are, please, and your positions.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Ford. I'm the comptroller for the Board of Education.
Good evening, and I'm Bonnie Walston. I'm the Director of Special Education, birth to 21, for the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Great. If you could, just give us an overview.
Thank you. I want to thank the council for allowing us to come before you this evening for this request for approval, and also like to thank Mr. Culver for his office forwarding this request on for council approval. This is a request that was made as a result of Dr. Hanlon, our superintendent, asking the Department of Special Education to put together a ED pathways program to be implemented upon approval of this transfer for emotionally disturbed students. The transfer in the amount of $41,000 will provide the necessary funding in that particular category to implement this program, and I asked Mrs. Walston, our director, to come and ask, answer any particular questions that the council may have relative to the ED or emotionally disturbed program.
Questions from council.
Is this done anywhere else?
Oh, yes, yes, there are enhanced programs so that we can keep the students that have these emotional and behavioral concerns within the school district without having to place them in non-public placements, so that they are able to remain in community and be at home.
So they will be at home instead of in the school system?
They'll be at home in the evenings, and during the day, they're educated in our school. This prevents them from having to be sent to a private, separate-day school.
And as you know very well, Mr. Dodd, those placements range anywhere from $38,000 to $140,000 for those non-public placements.
So, to beg you back off that, would this ultimately be a cost savings? I mean, do you project it to be a cost savings, then, doing it in the community rather than sending that, and how much?
The more we can educate in community to avoid those residential placement settings out of community, the more dollars we can save for Wycomico County, yes.
The goal is to provide the educational and mental health services to these students in a very comprehensive way, daily, so that they will be able to then return to their neighborhood school and be able to be with their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent possible.
Okay. The total outside of the 41, that's a transfer that has to be requested, the $141,000, now that's a transfer from a special education category to a special education category, but it was for contracted services going to salaries and wages, what was that, if I can just ask?
Yes.
I know you don't need our approval on that.
No, what that was, was we were going to attempt to hire an outside firm to provide that service for us.
Right.
That firm was not able to meet the needs. Dr. Hanlon approached Mrs. Walston about developing our own program using our staffing, and as a result, we're saving money by being able to do this.
Good, okay.
It's always difficult for me to read this fine print that's condensed down to one little page here, and I see all these special education to special education, and it's something about salaries. Are we gaining positions or losing positions, or what's happening here?
We are gaining positions. In other words, instead of contracting that service out, we are hiring staff within, so we are adding positions with this transfer.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 148, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Thank you all so very much.
Very, very much.
Next item is Resolution Number 149, 2016, to authorize the county executive to accept SMART grant funds in the amount of up to $45,000 from the Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services Information Technology and Communications Division, and to authorize the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding and a Maryland Network Live Scan System Agency Agreement.
Entertained a motion from council to accept Resolution 149, 2016.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
We have an explanation?
I'm trying to follow everything here. Sorry, Lieutenant.
Good evening, how's everybody?
Doing fine, thank you. How are you?
Trying to stay dry.
If you could give us an overview, we appreciate the efforts you take as far as trying to bring grants in, because whatever you can bring in is always a benefit to the county.
I appreciate it. Long story short, the Live Scan machine that we currently have is approximately, well, I think by the end of the day, it'll be 10 years old. As we all know, technology ages very fast. This machine will allow us to update and to stay on top of the technology as it's been changing. It's almost identical in looks, too, with the current machine that we have, but the software inside and the hardware is definitely updated.
Okay. And the software and hardware is for what, for just the public in general?
This is for fingerprint for our sex offender unit, for anybody that needs to be registered as a sex offender.
Okay.
Automatically uploads to the state system.
Okay. Is it software or a machine?
It's a combination of both.
Are we trading in the old one, or what's going on with that?
The old machine, at this point, we will talk to the state, see if they would like, see if they refurbish it. At this point, it's
There's no life left.
She's way outlived her expectancy. We've got our use out of it.
Always looking in that trade-in.
Any other questions? The, is there an annual service that's mandatory with this new software, with the hardware at all?
It's not mandatory, but this SMART grant that's being supplied to us will, right now, I believe will cover a five-year service agreement.
I'm sorry?
I believe will cover a five-year service agreement.
Okay, good, great. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 149, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on your agenda is Resolution Number 150, 2016. Both Resolution 150 and 151 are related, but they are nevertheless separate. Number 150, 2016, is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Opportunity Compact Grant Award from the Governor's Office of Children, and the Partnership for Families and Children in Wycomico County desires to modify the Opportunity Compact Grant to use the grant funds for the Wycomico County Teen Court. And there are representatives here from the local management board to answer any questions council members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 150, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Campbell? If you could?
Yep.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Congratulations to you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think just as an overview, to give us an idea, I think it's kind of interesting the fact that, of how this is all coming together, but
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I wanted to make sure that Mr. Schlesberg didn't want to come up. Okay, so, the overview is, a couple of years ago, or let me back up, because it is, I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, because years ago, we did have money for nine counties, there's nine of us that we combine on the short, local management boards, and that was a cost savings to reduce out-of-home placement for adjudicated youth. And that program, they stopped doing that program, and we had $145,000 left over for all nine counties, and it's a cost savings, so it's a return on our investment, similar to what Ms. Walston was talking about earlier, keeping them here in our county, and it's also to keep them out of juvenile detention, which we know costs a lot more money to keep them in there. So now we have that $145,000 sitting, and Queen Anne's County has just been holding it for us, and we want to use that for compact here now, even though last year, Governor's Office for Children gave us a grant for $200,000 that we were going to use for the compact combined with teen court, but in order to show the greatest cost savings with the Harvard expert, he says that we need to have them separate. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to, we're not going to really be able to show that, you know, show that, the cost savings, the return on investment, basically.
Okay.
So that's why we want to separate the two grants and have the teen court with the $200,000 that we already have here, you know, that's already been given to us, granted to us, and the $145,000 we would like to use for the Opportunity Compact, while also we will be working with the executive director from GOC to find matching funds for that as well.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 150, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. And we have one more, correct, Mr. Kramer?
Number, Resolution Number 151, 2016, will authorize the county executive to accept an Opportunity Compact Grant Award from the Queen Anne's County Community Partnership for Children and Families in the amount of $145,656.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 151, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thanks a lot, thank you very much.
Next is Resolution Number 152, 2016, declaring that Edit LLC, located at 100 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits. Edit is a hair salon right down here on the corner of the mall, of the plaza in North Division Street.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 152, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 152, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 153, 2016, declares that Farmers and Planters Company, located at 210 Mill Street, Salisbury, Maryland, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 153, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. Is this the first time they've applied for enterprise?
Yes.
That they're expanding their operation.
Is that why they're doing it?
Yeah.
Okay.
This, they're providing five new full-time jobs and 10 part-time jobs.
I was just curious, since they've been there for a long time.
Well, as Mr. Holloway said, Joe Holloway said, they're expanding northward from their present location.
Good.
It's good to see. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 153, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 154, 2016, declares that A&amp;M Family Group LLC, located at 1135 South Salisbury Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 154, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
What's, what do they do? What is A&amp;M?
I've never heard of it.
I don't know what the acronyms stand for, but the principal partner is Mayor Hafiz, representing A&amp;M Family Group LLC, and they have purchased a building at that location and have completely renovated it, or are in the process of completely renovating it to hold three separate businesses in a repurposed building at a total project cost of $500,000. So they're after the income tax credit.
You know, I've been through this, and I haven't found out what they do with these, I mean, it does, don't we need to know what kind of businesses we're approving for a tax credit?
I conducted a similar search from Mr. Holloway, but I gather that the business itself is in the business of, they purchased the building, are renovating the building, are now, are making it ready to be leased by three businesses.
I would like to know what they're doing before I vote for it.
I don't even know where the building is. Can you give us a landmark?
A big pardon?
Can you give us a landmark, give an idea where the building is?
I think, is it the one that's next to Bank of America, across from SU?
I think you're right.
The one that used to be a
I'm not sure about that.
ATV dealership?
The Honda?
We'll be happy to make inquiry.
I thought that was your docks in, or a medical facility, other than
We'll make inquiry further for council.
I guess my question would be then, if you say they're going to be running it out, how do we know how many employees they're having, and how do they know if they're just, you know, they said they suppose they had so many employees, aren't they, or is that just one of the qualifications?
It's either, either spending more than $50,000 on renovation or improving the property, or hiring so many
Either or, okay.
Yeah, either or, or both.
I'd like for us to table this until we find out what kind of businesses they're operating.
Well, they might not know what businesses are eventually going to lease out the space.
That might be true, but I don't want to approve a tax credit for a business that will
There is a motion, there is a motion to table. John, that does not require a second, am I correct, John Hall?
That's correct.
It's a motion to table on the floor, does not allow discussion. All those in favor of tabling this resolution, sorry, guys. All those in favor of table on the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I would be opposed, but I'd be in the minority. Motion, it'd be tabled until the next meeting, if we could.
Very well, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Holloway.
Next is Resolution Number 155, 2016, approving the Salisbury, Wycomico Ocean City, Salisbury Ocean City, Wycomico County Regional Airport, Airport Master Plan for subject project number 16093 in the amount of $283,500. The airports consultants, Delta Airport Consultants, is represented this evening by Mr. John Longacre, and David Hines of the airport staff is here to answer any questions you have, and if they can't answer them, probably Mr. Hall, or I could.
Okay.
Or Mr. Strasburg, or Mr. Culver.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 155, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Wayne, did you want to give us an overview? If you could just announce the order for the public, please. Wayne, I'm going to let you do this.
Thank you. Very gracious of you. David, you want to come forward?
I have with me this evening Mr. John Longacre from Delta Airport Consultants, and Mr. David Hines, who's our deputy airport director.
Good evening, gentlemen.
And John, John is the best person to walk you through the process and what we are doing here.
What I would suggest is that you make sure you do have the mic closed so that it gets out on the mic 14.
Sure.
Thank you. Good seeing you tonight.
Good beer.
Thank you, beer.
I guess you'd like to walk through the process of what we're accomplishing. Over the next several years, the goal is to ultimately extend runway about 600 feet, and the FAA has a certain process and program you have to follow to justify getting FAA funding for the project. This first step is what they call a master plan. The current master plan was completed about 20 years ago, and we've been updating it and adding pieces and parts, and one of the things the FAA would like for us to do, to be able to get full funding, or at least have the FAA support on the project, and funding can work its way through, is to do a master plan update, basically today's standards. They've changed their standards over the years, they've updated some of their standards and designs criteria, and that's what this, on the table this evening, is to do that new master plan update, and it will provide guidance for the development of the airport, not just for the runway extension, but for other elements within the airfield itself, the airfield environment, understanding that jet service coming in from Piedmont will change some characteristics of the airport, obviously the runway extension's one of them. We'll look at the terminal area to see if things need to be improved in the terminal area. Preliminary, we don't see any reason why, it's the same kind of aircraft size-wise that you already are having, it's just jets versus prop-driven, but we'll also look at other elements to make sure that there's a nice development plan in the future, so you don't build something and then realize a couple of years later it was built incorrectly or at the wrong location, and that's really the purpose of the master plan. Second phase, once the master plan's completed, we are required by federal law to do what they call a NEPA study or an environmental study, we have to follow the National Environmental Policy Act. We need to look at all the development over the next five years to ensure that whatever environmental impacts we may have, that we can mitigate for them, or document that we don't have any environmental impacts in certain areas. Wetlands, noise, the tree clearing issues, all that stuff needs to be studied, I think there's, we're up to 22 different environmental categories we need to go through and document, and that makes you then obligated and eligible for federal funds at that point. Concurrently with environmental, we're going to be doing the preliminary engineering, that helps us to refine the cost. Preliminary engineering also defines the footprint of the impact that we're going to have for the five-year program, helps us determine wetlands, for example. We know there's some wetlands on the airport, can we mitigate, tighten some of the grading up so we don't impact those wetlands, or how much do we do impact them, and how do we mitigate for them? Finally, it's final design and bidding, and hope to be in construction, very aggressive schedule, three to four years, the longest, but three years would be ideal to be, at least, in construction, starting 2018.
Okay. Any questions? Yes?
So, during the executive's CIP hearing, we talked a lot about the CIP requests that will come for the runway, so this, this is basically a study to talk about, that will inform how the county then possibly spends that money that you might put in the CIP, is that, is that kind of a way to put it, or, I mean, or, I mean, it's larger than that, I mean, because it talks about more than the runway, I guess.
Yeah, but this
Anyways, you just, you know, tie in, tie in that with the CIP money, I guess.
Yeah, what this really, what this step does, actually, is it takes us through the FAA approval process, and that FAA approval process requires, this is really what's called a mini-update on the master plan, and we have to look at any aspect of our airport master and we have to look at any aspect of our airport master plan that may change in the FAA's estimation because of the trade-out of the turboprops for RJ's. Uh, so, so it's really, uh, aimed, A, at regulatory approval to proceed with the extension, but then, B, for the engineering, um, for the construction of the, uh, of the extension.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Any other questions?
I, I think it's important that the public knows where the funding's coming from for this and how it, how it works.
The funding will eventually come from the FAA. The FAA, we're entitled to a million dollars a year, uh, from the FAA in entitlements. That money is spoken for with previous projects for probably at least the next four years. So FAA, uh, funding for this will kick in in about five years. However, as, as we mentioned in the, uh, CIP public hearing, we've got a timing problem because Piedmont Airlines would like the runway to be built, um, in the next two years. We can't therefore wait for the FAA to begin to fund the costs associated with this extension. Uh, so the county will likely forward fund that runway extension, and, and the working model right now, John, is that we have about $6.4 million in what's called bond premium. Uh, bond premium has to be utilized either for capital projects or for repayment of debt, and it has to be used within three years of the date it's received. And we're beginning to come up on three years from the first tranche of premium that we received. So we believe that a good use of that bond premium account will be to forward fund the construction of the runway and will then be reimbursed, uh, in years, probably years five through 10, five through 11. So eventually, the money is going to be repaid. We would probably, uh, forward fund this money to the airport at an interest rate that would be equivalent to our cost of borrowing, which is a little bit over 2%. So the county, at the end of the day, will come out whole, uh, and we'll be able to proceed with the runway extension, which is critical, uh, to Piedmont's, to Piedmont's operations.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Will Piedmont be flying to BWI?
Piedmont will not be flying to BWI.
You know somebody had to ask that question.
Uh, Piedmont, Piedmont, uh, flies, their hubs are Philadelphia and, uh, Charlotte. So they will be flying to both of those airports, and I think I mentioned this at the public input meeting. It's very interesting, the, um, um, passenger flight costs are such that airlines really need about a 90% payload, full payload, in order for the flight to be profitable. So, when, when the regional jets get into summer months, um, hot air, not, not as much lift as the planes take off, the regional jets don't have deployable leading edges, so they don't get as much lift, believe it or not. You saw Trump 757 land here and take off here. Uh, the, the, those jets are designed to get up very quickly and get down very quickly. These RJ's aren't. And, um, ergo, that's why we need the extension of the runway in order to, to allow Piedmont to, to fly full loads, full fuel and passenger loads out of the airport.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 155, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carry. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we move on to public comments. If anyone would like to make a public statement, come to the podium here, state your name if you could, please, and, uh, your affiliation.
Um, hi, I'm Natalie Loveland Stone. Um, I'm here on behalf of all of our pets. We currently, um, have an issue because, um, I believe, uh, the dog laws were changed in 2007 or 2008, and since then, I believe in 2012, um, many of the county council have had issues with the dog laws, um, whether it's how dogs are not being treated fairly, whether, um, they're dealing with people, and, um, numerous pets have been put down or have issues. Um, since the county council and other people have found issues with the dog laws, about 14 pages of families have been affected by them. There have been many instances where everybody's agreed to vote on different laws and kind of help them, um, and we understand many of the laws have been put in place for people's safety, and we agree with that. We, we really do, and we, um, we really applaud the animal control and the Humane Society and a lot of your decision-making in the past. We're not negating that. Um, the problem is, is there are some circumstances where, um, other things were not brought up that we didn't foresee before, um, instances where some people might see a, um, insurance policy, um, on a dog as a way to make more money and endangering an animal in the, in the, in that way. Um, another instance is, um, service dogs possibly being put down. Um, things where, um, one side of an argument might not be seen as another side. And, um, currently, we have a, a, almost 11-year-old dog. He's, um, uh, meets all VA Federal Service Dog requirements, and he's also a Korean Gendo, which is Korea's 53rd National Treasure. So we have him, and, um, typically, there are some dogs that have, um, been returned within two weeks, um, if they've gone to the media or things like that and have more severe punishments. So we fall under an incident where many times, um, dogs aren't judged evenly. Um, a board can make different decisions based on what they hear, but the general rule isn't, um, being serviced to everybody. Like, if you're a person, you would have due process and you would have time. Um, our dog has been in the pound for, since April at $20 a day, and, um, he's a service dog. He opens doors, he, um, opens cabinets, and, um, he's my dad's best friend, and he's currently in the VA hospital and has been told he may only have three months to live. So we've been fighting this situation, um, very calmly and very nicely, and, um, we don't, we don't wanna go the media route. We don't, we don't wanna do that. We wanna help, and we wanna help other people. And, uh, we know everybody here has agreed even two months ago, um, that this needs to be addressed, and we'd like to help as opposed to, you know, get all upset about it. Um, so you guys wanna read what you wrote?
Okay. Excuse me. Um, recently, we, uh, started a petition and a line we have about almost 2,000 signatures. So, the purpose of this petition is to have the aggressive dog law, um, looked over and possibly changed. Or go by the Maryland, uh, state law until, um, we are able to, uh, figure out a new law for this county. The problem is, is that, um, due to the, uh, the law isn't written legally. Ms. McDonald has, our attorney, has, um, actually, um, submitted eight pages, um, explaining why it, it's not written legally. And there have been incidences where, um, a dog that is literally ripped apart, a cat, has been returned in two, in two weeks, but our dog hasn't, um, been returned in seven months, and he's a service dog. The purpose of this petition is to save our 10-year-old dog, Dolly. He has no history of aggression that, and meets all federal service dog guidelines with documented function as well as many more dogs in Wycomico County. Dolly is a rare Gendo and protected as Korea's 53rd National Treasure as well as, and is protected under federal law that service dogs are not supposed to be put down and only retired if they are seen as aggressive. Dolly has visited several hospitals, including Baltimore's Veterans Administration, Perry Point Lock Raven, and even the local PRMC, and he has assisted my grandfather for, uh, at least three years. Um, he opens doors, cabinets, and, um, serves as a function dog to my grandfather, and he lives with, um, little dogs and has had no prior incidences.
We have received photographs and letters from the military, police, and families whom have had interaction or children and babies cared for, do, cared for in Dolly's home, assessing Dolly's positive nature. Dolly's attorney has submitted eight pages to the county explaining where the county's laws need clarification and why Dolly should come home. Employees of the Wycomico County's Animal Control and Humane Society have taken wonderful care of Dolly since April. The animal control officers and Humane Society workers play with Dolly and allows us to visit and have been without incident the extent of the time he has been with them. Even an employee from the Department of Health that had to deem Dolly by this law was testified to claim an obedient nature. One top of this, the co- the county is charging $20 a day on top of the legal fees to keep Dolly there, whether they kill him or not. Many feel the Wycomico County ordinance is too strict and conflicts with the standards the state Maryland sets for animals. The wonderful county employees, along with people in the community, hope the county law, the county dog laws are rewritten to remove these impacts to families and animal laws. Wycomico County states they are permitted to make their own country laws, county law stricter, that the state and federal laws and allegedly kill, I, Satan County laws, Wycomico State's, they're permitted, and kill Dolly. Unfortunately, Dolly was playing with a baby chihuahua that wandered onto his property and allegedly killed despite conflicting testimony and lack of evidence. Even though extensive, extensive positive testimony and photographs, photography of Dolly's character has presented to the board, Dolly was offered to be killed as, as a vicious animal by a panel of people that never met him in person. Dolly should not be killed for this reason. Dolly should be able to live out the last few elderly years with his family.
Um, thank you for listening, and, uh, we hope you can get this addressed. Thank you. I think what we're all trying to say is that we really wanna help the animals, and we know you guys do, too. Um, we got to meet with our councilmen this morning, um, and our administrator and everybody, and, um, we think this county's really positive. We just moved here three years ago. Uh, my dad's been here for about 13 to 15. Um, and, um, we just wanna help everybody. We just wanna help, um, maybe even come up with people that can help in the committee. Um, we've heard, uh, since 2012, they've been trying to form a committee to work on these laws, and, um, we do understand that the Humane Society has submitted suggestions in 2012, and I know about two months ago, they were asked to submit some more, and I know they are ready to, but we always fall under the issue where the county has to pay a part of the Humane Society's costs, and so do the families who have to pay for these dogs. And then we also run into safety, and we wanna make sure everybody's safe, and we wanna make sure these animals are cared for, um, and, uh, we just wanna make sure our dogs get home. And, uh, that everybody gets their due process and everything else they're supposed to do. Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have your contact information?
Yes, um, our county councilman has it, as well as your administrator, and, um, is there anything else? And Dolly's at the pound. If you guys wanna go meet him, he'll give you kisses. Um, he can open doors and cabinets. Um, he speaks Korean, though. You have to say anjo to sit and nuwa to lay down, but I mean, he'll, he'll definitely listen to you, and I'm sure any of the Humane Society people could definitely tell you how great he is.
We are, we are putting together the commission again.
Yes.
Because it was several years ago, and actually, the focus at that time was protecting humans.
Right.
And now we feel that, at the other end of the equa, the other end of that formula needs to be addressed as well for, for the pets themselves.
Right.
Uh, we've been waiting until actually December because some of the very, uh, critical people who are involved in that process could not begin that until December, so it should be relatively soon when we get started.
It's, it's, um, very exciting that that's happening, but it's also a little sad because, um, in 2007 and 2008, we did hear, um, that there was an incident with a boy and a dog. And, um, we understand if there was human, you know, interaction and somebody's a dangerous, you know, that needs to be held accountable for, but if it's like a dog-on-dog issue, following the state law, um, you know, their, a dog's, uh, it's more like a three-strikes-you're-out rule. First time, you know, you kind of get a warning or a fine or obedience class, the second time, they get a muzzle and they're restrained, and the third time, they're euthanized. Um, and we understand with the county, they have to keep it safe. We, we really applaud that, and I mean, I have children and other kids I babysat, um, but I mean, this dog has been with babies and everybody else and goes to four or five hospitals, so it's like, kind of show that, um, and the thing that's kind of worrisome is it was 2012 where even board members have quoted to the press and the TV that they wanna change the law, and we're really excited that maybe, and I know that they're not here anymore, that maybe you guys can get it done expeditiously. I'm really worried about my father, and, but not only that, it's 14 pages of families since they made that comment that they wanted to review it, so maybe you guys can get it done quicker. It'd be great, and, um, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Council comments.
Um, well, I just, uh, wanna say that I did meet with Natalie and, um, and the girls earlier today, and, um, her attorney has presented, um, she presented a copy of some information from her attorney that talked about the county laws and, um, specifically how they might need to be clarified. So, you know, we, we have some legal, um, you know, clarification on some of those things so that, you know, I'll provide a copy of that to the council members, too, so we can move forward with that, so.
Thank you, Councilman Kellner. Any other council comments? Councilman Holly?
Um, yeah, I had the opportunity, um, last Thursday night to go to, um, the Delmore Chamber of Commerce. They had their, um, Citizen of the Year Award, and this year, they, something a little different. They, um, they awarded, um, that honor to a couple, Gary and Anna Humphries, and it was, um, well-deserved. Apparently, that couple's been quite active in the neighborhood, and, uh, they had a roomful of people there to honor them, so I really enjoyed that visit. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks for being there, Joe. Any other council comments?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Matt Holloway for nominating me for Vice President, and I thank everyone for, um, supporting me.
Thank, thank you, Vice President Dodd. Any other council comments? Under Presidential comments, um, we had, as everybody should know by now, we had the Salisbury Christmas Parade on Sunday, and, uh, it was, it was a great parade. I think it's the largest turnout I've ever seen. I know other council members were there as well. I know the executive was there. I took three times as much candy as I normally do, and I ran out about two-thirds of the way through as how many people were there, so, um, but it was great. I was glad to see the turnout. I'd like to thank the Salisbury J.C.'s and the city of Salisbury for the great work that they do to make that happen. That's an important part of the community, and I know, I certainly enjoyed it. I'd also like to thank the, uh, council members, uh, for their support as far as president of the, uh, council. I don't take it lightly, and I certainly do appreciate everyone's support in that fact.
Mr. President, I think, I think we should once again recognize Matt, Mr. Matt Holloway for his... for his services Vice President for these past two years, and his president prior to when I was on the council, but thank you for your service to Wycomoco County in, in those positions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. That being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session followed by closed work session.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Meeting's adjourned. We'll take a five-minute recess if we could, Mr. Kramer?
Yes, sir.